As far as Member of Parliament, the Parliamentary Candidate for Tamale Central constituency, Mr Ata Isa is here. I said former MNDCEs are here. The rep is seated behind me here, that's Honorable Abdul Hanan Gundadu, former Mayor of Tamale. A former regional organizer, now a National Executive Committee member, Godfred Wumbi-Ye Lomano is here. We have another National Executive Committee member, Lawyer Ata, former parliamentary candidate for Dimbila. Former Deputy Chief of Staff, Honorable Ken Upanja is here. Former Chief of Staff, Honorable Julius Debra, he is also here. We also have in our midst, Nana Philip Archer. He is a chief, a traditional ruler from the central region. He is here. We have in our midst, Honorable Al Haji, EBA Fisene, Member of Parliament for Tamale.
Eh, yé twa ama zongo, yé twa ala mamangne biyèn ma, tiang pán látè man kàtè nanglè tiya tiya. Eh, dama, wïyitémde ti, oïn yéte bala zongo, kàtè chèn te parè eh, mòbehe poumanè. Zongo pouma mamangla nè, okanan outingè, tumama nè tumnecham, bal zongo débè sèm sèm nè tètètfi la pam. Manu kwen sou cham nyala, Al-Iti Northern Region, Bal-Iti Tamale, yèl manglè yara, teka opposition. Eh zou, yé Northern Region Bal-Iti Tamale, teka opposition. Tènè mamangin yéte opposition. Yé tèmamanga, tènè minyéte opposition. Dèzò, ensoula sokamzaha, netè pán mete mangan, kàtè souina wunè Bal-Iti Dalphakambla, netè nanemla, kana wun pàtè zayino kam solu, kàtè kàtè zantè souré swantènga, kàtè kàtè hala karapata ba. Lalama yébiyèbiyè agopuni, NDC kourle denda pounbiye Northern Region, kabonèle NDC stronghold la, dènè adenla yàn lavna. Dalir mìn chè, kàtè toudoungò, tèrakou NDC, mbòbèhal kapte mini, NDC nyala, NDC stronghold nyala, eh Northern Region wama, dalire. Bambèpán lala dalir ma, bambèpán lala dalir ma, be proper ganda, bebe shire, toche kapchantè yar garangmala, namana ma zou nda che, ka NDC maliya. Ama, mbòrmenè tèzahatyege, nekweykan namana mayirse tèNorthern Region wò, wabègèdama la kòsa yikoko Northern Region. Eh zou, NDC dà poun tìrme, kàlabre diran, labre dira, kabweykan namana mananti yisè tèNorthern Region. Kòsa yikoka nèbèra mala, bole ratale, dama tèrakpam, mete bala marakpam, kàtè yàn mákpan tèban, ne NDC nyé pàtè chalè, dènè ngondè liabgèm sèm chalè dèmaldankou. Yèn liabgèm sèm dèmaldankou, mbïyala liabgèm sèm, kanyan wà liabgèm sèm dèmaldankou makbenè. Ay kanatè le zongo, tènè ngolèmbùn chalè dèmbiètè toudou kàtè zahama le kourte bukata. Shabza le minyè, mbòrbenyama zongo, tumapam dian kar koutou toum, benètè ngolèmbùn. Lalà ngolèmbùn ma, NDC dà fànè kàtè tìrma. Eh zou, twa marika lajiba, kàwabè gpa tiniyèkana, entezant street license te fonchènè ma, kànè bankpam manke kani, kabirebutè wama ananya galga pale. Yé birbetè wama ananya galga na pale. Dèzò kanyayetènè maliabgèm sèm chalè dèmaldankou. Ayirinì, ay chantè late dalshiptè tètalwa Tamal Regional Hospital, yèn liabgèm sèm dèmaldankou mbala. Al-Iti Tamalpala, tèndan yébehe, soïla yéwola kànè no biyala double road. Double road ma zayinèndan yàlè kàtè mili karbiè, eh Tamal tèmpuni. Zongo soïla yàno biyala double road, amboje Tamale, bozò, NDC pán man kòzò. Ay kanatè le, lalayumuyunè, tèsèknera kana yango, entèmaltè palazaha, yé tènè maka tèbonè liabgèm sèm dèmaldankou. Ay kanatè le tèdale plépak wò, bannamìn changha chi, yung kura dèn garlani. Be yala, fetina chalè, NDC gomnantènè yé makaterba. Be nyanga, Al-Iti Halmakada, NDC nèramal pán man chalè, zantèka makada dohtènga, zongo ala kàtè yòr kàtèn maka. Ama arika lajibka sou yàliya, ne suè yunwò, tèmala eh opportunity, netè cheka musulèn liabtèn bal zolara. Kàtè boare de lanka boare tèmangan, yèlala musulèm ma, oïn jang tèbiètèn bal zolan tálma na halè zongo. Te pasara, nam di lawa ala, biblè hijabi cha, eh biblè hijabi, in chang nèsènèmne. Biblè hijabi chantètchane mne, ke karimbadim chaw kar kàtèbami. Buendalkou na minyagou noualè, entètfi la saïen zankpàr polu, kar wun ozarla musulènèm zò. Ama tèyèr zongo wama, ayèr la tèn bal zò jònd, tèn bal zò jònd Ramani Mahama. Dènèmno pa musulèm ma zayinè, ozarla lalayàlè mazo. Kàtè yinatèlè, eh jenadoumanè, yèl etyèn nangla LGBTQ, be yèn chèka pa koutou bo pa a, do koutou bo pa a, do tètèn ban wònè. Dama tètchehra, hal an anav saha, bo wutètè, ne eh, eh tèn ban, eh di gùlma, na wun sou chèda saïa. Ko liabgètèn ban zanpèlala yàlè wama zò. Dèndan dènè, kàlalatè musulèm mabji wama, ko na mìyinantè yagou noualè, n'zankpàlala yé twa wama polu. Dèzò te boarla bayen zabre musulènèm zò, yèliyàha chi yé twa, ondan yètèn ban zolan, ndanbiyala ha jbo. Ora swantème, kàha chi da ayumata, karwo duzou sa, be ora chama kàBank of Ghana, kàvétèr ha chi, nèmà eh dollars. Be yèn chèka tukuyi samba netè dale, zongo ha chi tètèmà, pefa dàlme, butasò, dèragnala about eh eleven million. Eh one hundred and ten million de sa amà, zongo rignala about seven hundred million, bole dale. Kàlalatè mabji wama akò, bian kàlajin yàl chalè zò. Ama, NDC gomnantènè tètèholidènè ma, tèmusulènèmà, tìlanyan poutrò, tèmala holidè debay, chotètèholidè biyanme. Kàtòbel holidè biyanè, NDC gomnantèbannà pa musulènèmà, bannàtèle. Kàtèmala Islamic Unit of Education, NDC gomnantèmà antèle. Ama abrapa musulèmà, dèzò te boarla wïyan maltè bukata, wïyan koutè bukata, kàwïyètè mabhihale. To ni mánèkan la yàn zan, kàpansè, nèr yàyétè nyala tènè nyéte dèmbala, te pán mete mán pam, kàtèmaltava. Dama pàtè dà fàni, de kani wu yilosani. Yé pàtè dà fàni, de kani wu yilosani. Abemi adalirla nènyéso. Abemi adalirne biyè sonuuni. Dèzò pán mya imangan, tènyè beka wum sòtè, nèni kura isawra, yimbi tènyala paham solu. Abebandu mounmari yàl manglè. Ay nyèbiya, kani wun kura isawra, aden nyala paham solu. Dama abebandu mounmari yàl manglè, abemi adalirla nènyéso. Dèzò te pán mete mangan, kàtè tabte pán masa hanangban yé, kàdiha fàni na wun biyèso.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much, Honorable Al-Hassan Suine. Entènè po yàlè yé, oïn yàlè Asise Pawa, oïn yinama, amate zari nyaya, te paya, te paya. To, eh tèna chènla, o piwupiwuyale. Ama, tiambòlòme, ko kanatè pouhi, go. Aywòr na wum dèm diwoun noualènè pam, zaoyongò, nyimpan tèna Batku Campus Mapunè, entèrè wum kanya. Mbòlò, mbapra, dilmallana, Honorable Al-Hajji, ABA Fissene, oïn yàtè pou dàswa.
Eh zou, ah mwenè sa, wabibiyè dianpèn, kòsan bel kable alavna. Eh zou, eh zou zou, eh zou zou, eh zaza. Itébi, itébi, hey, hey, hey. Na wun na abakadèn Tamal brichinèmne. Dèzò rùnòlè, tètèn ban zolansanè. Dagwa pán bya le, na wun mbòbèlè sansa diwadin, diakasa abesakam do koutou polu. His Excellency President John Drummond Mahama. Na wunno nam gafara, na wunno nam gafara, na wunno nam gafara. He elected Shatin Yanchang, December seventh, twenty twenty four. Na wunno nam gafara, si votin na kaptèn wusonu, dènyala His Excellency President John Drummond Mahama, kàbèzàn as President-elect. Na wunno nam gafara ka seven January, kàtè titiye bozùnè ma, kàrebètè manchènè do toyile. Kàtè chènla Ankara, netè nyà President Mahama nyèm popo cham, kàkanatè nyà nin tàng, nin tàng chèzou dèmbòngmara. Dagwa pán bya, na abebande agun bukata, na labangu to tole. His Excellency President John Drummond Mahama. January seventh, twenty seventeen, when daya yu office, wara zanlè yé tòchèzam brigana nèm sa. Wara yèl let's be slitty, nè liabgètè dabanè. Ne posterity will judge me. Dènè nyòwula dabanè, dianè, de sa mòbò mbòché, kàyèl mamalipoulepan kàshokam yale. Eh zou. Ne abebande apakro, bukata, na lâtèpòpàsòpolu zò. Kàdagwa pán mala yàla, ne ay san abonliè wouhaou, chimakarwo dalka mbana abouma, oïn yàlaboua akò pa wouhaou. Eh zou, President Mahama nèra tunda. Kàkanama chènviyè yàlengà, kàtè zanyèr in chèncham, nè sa libèchamà, aman mbòbècham. Anounè kànyà afanabènè, kànimetèlè, chè atèbale. Chè dètè yànounè, kànampan bicham ankwan. Tèzàdè kàtè chàra, te bambar motonè ma, araku bamotou zanchantè zale. Ne wènèm pán mánà, etyè atramalha le, shiri debanou bien majri. Bra Lier Petrofisi debanou titi, zongo achan nètèliè shiri debanouta, wazan lèpánwa pòyan yinabak, Petro ma koutou yinadènè. KàPetro galan, President Mahama sa, kànyà shiri piyèna nahe. Galan wunè, akousan galan chana tèpetro, shiri piyèna na kàndale. Mbapra zongo shiri piyèna ma, ana ma, dringyal lita, lita zayinà, kàgalan yinà. Eh zou. Kàtè yàn nùn lòre, lòre, lòre chagi, in chèse polu kam. Zongo tèyèn liabgèm cham, de garbounu chètèn dalwale, agà President Mahama. Te poukwa dèn polu, mouna te pagnyela poukwa, poukwa ra. KàPresident Mahama sa, arayenda kwandèm, arayenda fétlaza, arayenda bisakam dièsoa. Kàto chèn pouli diye afanè, in kren tèmbidouma, in bakwa kànafanè. Zongo andè President eh akofado, omenè tebapre, dòtèbawiya, mayòyè dòtèbawiya wuna, wekwa dèswa nyinlin wutan kànan sa. Eh zou, zongo alèbògònachma, be kàkanayounè bichakam zaha. Kàvi, viyin yàla bicham, etyè, wïyan nobe diviso, ona chèmlovi. Dama, mbapre, balazan kùyiloiila. Ne pòpò kànàtèpán lobo, saman noualè. Yàlèmètòda, zanètòda, mananètòda. Dèzò bichakam, zongo de lèbèsèm man noualè. Silmèsè yàla saanèkàzò, tìre zan, wòwutwa, be yumanè chabitchamo, kàzàn President Mahama konko yumanai. De valèkàtè toyèchè polu kam. Dèzò yèzènla, tebapre, sou yènènènyènènè, e wòdènyè kontisitila. Takachè dèmàtè zongo, dènyèlè tèsa, tuzom na wunè, tuzom na wunè, tuzom na wunè. Kàlam, tèm kamsaha ka NDC chèkamale, kàlam, na wunno nam gafara, nasarama dènyèlè tèdènè. Yèsoula sokam, tèNDC ma, de chèm kambaliyàgatè zaha. Tèzàzò musuru, dèrèkam dèm dèrètèm fàm miskèrma, na wun gafara, kàkanatèn zatèpànàsèwèbètava. Mbaptiyan nèsèm kàHis Excellency President John Drummond Mahama. Ko lavna, kàtè MP bambèbòwani yàmasa, entèm pi chèsansan zale. Ne kàyàtè zanè, entètè NDC, na wun gafara kàtè votitibizaha. Kablabdi, kaNDC épal metri majore tèpal menponè, kaHis Excellency President Mahama diha. Ma wumò, etyè achstan, narwun kambètè, ondi chara. Ne President Mahama sahane, tènyè MP, na wun gafara kàtè nyèsòsò, kàsan narwun liabgèhà, liabgèkàtèn, liabgèchabla, be mala chire. Wunè dalbakan, ne President Mahama gomnanti dalbakan balà. Ashèt ilavna, wama wunan nona balà, wabibiyèn gkàna. Dèzò yèn kàyàtèkamzajandi, netèzàbòntièn nèsèm, i chèkamètava. Kàzona wunè, kàzote NDC ma, nambo, kàndu manà wun yuli kapàtè souré ne. Kàzàn wera mapàtè zongo, kàtèzèm masalèfchètètè woutou, na wun gafara kàna wun zan nasaratiti. Dèzò dagwa pán bya la, ne yiliyidàdèn, yinat, notiyo yé twa, ni nàchifchama, abechèye yé twa mapan. Dèzò mbèyè yé twa mapan, miyè zalati. Eh, nouwawabouna, sebe tèdàm kùgòmà, kùgòmà nabèdàm, kùgòmà tèdàm wunà, tèn wèl hatèlou sa payele. Na wun na abakadènè, eh zou, eh zou.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable ABA Fissene. We invited him to give a brief introduction, but it appears he has said a lot. Nonetheless, you will get more from him this evening at Batku. Dèzò dimyàsoro, yungò, aywònari wum bichakam, tècham asanè, tèchana Batku yungò, constituency pune. To, kumpòtèm bòlò, tènji constituency chèmwa made MP. Amanè ayembuiyè chi, kànyènè shiro, tekweyèn yo yinatè pouhi, kàlabchantè shine. Jèla kàtè nongdilmalan, Honorable Haroun Al-Drisu Maraba.
Eh zou, eh zou, eh zaza. Excellency John Drummond Mahama. Inshallah, 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 the President of the Republic to be come January seventh, twenty twenty five. General Secretary, Regional Chairman, Executive Consuency Executive Saint Chairman, Chair of Council of State, respected members of the Council of State. There is only one Chief of Staff, former Chief of Staff and colleague, National Chair, Vice Chair, former Governor. Be yàlè yànè zongo, kàmariyè shibouma, madèkounyala, onpouyàpam kapay. Ou kàmno dagoniya, ne zongo xiwò, xiinè dilmà. Kàtè zakbay, nanban yinè. Netyèn tume, kàPresident John Drummond Mahama. Oisen lou akofado, in Northern Region and in Tamale, it will begin with Tamale. Akofado yètèlou Tamalwò, kàtè zakbay, nou yèloume, kàyerdoè. Kababano rechilounyàn la pama, kàyerdoè. Eh zou, etoakènè zayinèn koubiyènè. Al-Iti Tamalwòma, dènènò de kumbò, dènènò de savrgo, dènènò de zavzo, dènènò de mia. Be kirebòm chàtèm moutamalwòma, malkounbe yàama, banyèm man kàtèbromà, kàrner lala, konshèsènèm ma saha. Eklodèn, tolò, bùnporogo, nèmàporogo. Tìbòwè yàlanga, kababande President Mahama wèyètìla. Northern Region dagwane Tamalwè yàlanga, konshèsènèm ma zayèsàm atèle, kàtètèlè wèyè yàlanga, tènènò yàla. Eh zou, kàtè chètàm chiresebo, kàtè na nyàzubò, kàtè kure. Nètchàtè chòndè pàtè ma, kàtèzona wunè, kàtèzona wunè, kàtèzona wunè. Ne yèl kure ma, kure ma chèlèbèla liyèmà pune. Kàkure ma chènyè, kàtènò de wabègè, namèn bedàr zikèkure. Chalè ya, zongo kàtè zakbay, netè boan, netèchale, labe etenyanga. Kàtùmti NDC party, tèndàpoun tùmde chalè nineteen ninety six, two thousand, two thousand four, two thousand eight, twenty twelve. Liyèmda etirla Northern Region, kàramalè dilmà. Mbapre, umarbelebe, chòranè regina secretary de sa. Ni pamp, bannamè dagoniya, tìrakwen di Northern Region, abakà wabègètèto yikòsa nahe. Malkòsa wui Northern Region, ammeni azàhab jimbara, ammeni azàhab jimbara. Double two, ne wabègètòm tìkòse Northern Region. Karèlèpala, kàtè NDC ma mbala be, kàtè Northern Region ma mbala. Tìyichò, sokamumpamouma, tahe. Dènèkamanò, dènèkannò, kàrèchòm pàtè ma, kàvot ma, labrenyàngma, kàmala lapiyàngma, kàmalama ra, kàmalpàtè ma, kàtèsètèwèyè yàlanga, na wun na abakadèn. My colleague MP spoke on one subject. Kambonè yèlne, yèlne dènèlè. When Honorable Mutala and Honorable Suine spoke, they all spoke about President Mahama and his respect for the Muslim Ummah and the religion of Islam and Muslims. As Vice President and President, he demonstrated utmost respect to the religion and his practice. I still remember when he said that, and maybe, Mr. President, I want to quote your exact words. Haroun, can't we get some doctors and nurses trained so that they are dedicated to how we see off Muslims when you people are preparing them for Janassa? I still remember that. Soyèm tìa da dînèchilema, okuyàlala, okodangala. Kotya anyame, netè wum sèm doctor nèma, ne nèsènè ma. Kabetinyàla, tìse lèrète pàlubanyè musulènèm da chilè, kàrènyàla musulèm doctor, ne musulèm nèsènèm èlè, bedàchilema, orana lala. Eh zou, then finally, Hajj. I'm sure when he gets the podium, he himself will speak to his policy on the Muslim pilgrimage of Hajj. But at least, to the media, let it be said without any fear of contradiction that the NDC from President Rollis, through John Evans Attamills, and President Mahama saved the Muslim well, and it is to our signature credit that Idal Arha and Idal Fitri were made national holidays. That is part of the respect for the Muslim Ummah and the Muslim religion. So that, dòrò dòrò isanèmne koutère be Christmas, kàmalholidèla. President Rollis nèliyèm bandàchale, nèretyèn etèbayidire tèchò, kàtèmala holidè, na wun na abakadèn. Then my final comment is on Hajj. Eh zou, musulènèmà be chò. Akofado wunè kuchamba, alpumpò alèn chiamna wunè, dènènò laxara. Yàlèn chiamna wunè, dènènò laxara. Dama ay chambaka, under Excellency John Drummond Mahama, no Muslim pilgrimage traveling for Hajj paid more than twenty, twenty thousand Ghana cities, or twenty-five thousand Ghana cities. Today, it is seventy-five thousand Ghana cities. Dèrètounè chèkamplala diwudi yaya, ma ayama, behati siko bold ma. The Holy Prophet himself said that Hajj as a pillar of Islam. Anamamanda yàlème, no chalemeti bamale yiku, bamale yiku. Eba nyàfànè wòkilebò kura ne ayama, kàmbasâhadi smapahe. Eh zou. Ah, kàakofado depa wùmiya, be shile changcham wama, bamale yikoma nètòlachang. When the Prophet said the Haddith, alaywudi, abenèm etènèn kàrènyàhou, abou, abou rera Haddith indan yàlè. He said that, o chalemeti musulènèm bamale yiku, nebi ne towi, kàbouyo, kachang tèdjamwen, na wunè, kachang kaba, kachang maka. Zongo, under MPP Baumia, it is becoming practically difficult and impossible because of that limitation for us even to recognize Allah at that level. Then policy again, Mr. President, forgive me for taking too much time. I said I didn't have a voice to speak and colleagues. It was against John Drummond Mahama. And today I want to recognize my brother, the Governor, Dr. Nashiru. Maybe he has, maybe he has forgotten. When President Mahama asked me to begin work on the Tamale International Airport and Kumasi International Airport, I authorized Dr. Nashiru, then Chief Executive of Edith, together with Professor Jan Baffo of MPP and Honorable Amaru Sorogo, who was Chairman of the Trade Committee in Parliament with one nyaku from the Ministry of Trade, to go to Frankfurt, Germany to study the international airport concept and come and build Tamale Airport and Kumasi Airport to serve Muslim pilgrimage. This is what happened, so Dr. Nashiru, refresh your memory. He were a committee of five, that I said that you should go and study the coast all concept so that you build coast to us beyond President Mahama's vision. Ome vision ma, kambayelèbèle dakban kàsanki, orayelèmènè TNT maka, ne musulènèn dilmà maka chende. Again, Haroun, ayda yafi, suvito from Tamale Street to Medina maka, and quote, those were experts. That happened, that happened. He made sure that for the first time in the development of this country, Muslims flew to Hajj Mecca from Tamale. They were not to go and sleep and be disgraced in any tents, in a kra, around airport, around some chemicals there. He is a man we are to honor, and honor him with our votes to be President of the Republic of Ghana. Yesterday I spoke some English, and I hear some people still don't understand the English because me I went to kulkul school, so my English is not as good as those who went to Achimota. When they say they are comparing John Mahama to Dr. Baumia, here my words well. I said the most experienced, experienced Vice President, experienced President, and not experienced Vice President wanted to compete an experienced President, but...
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Haroun Al-Drisu. To, te paya, te paya, te paya, Honorable Haroun Al-Drisu. Poï, kàwïyèn tètfi lama, yinàwèyè sàlèchongò, te programma, dèbèlùviyèn yàlangatè, nèmfor shava. Eh sàlèchèkàtèm sandanè dèmbòyùalè, international Vice Chairman, lawyer Abdu Raufman, National Vice Chairman, Chief Azoka. Ne, ne nyabètèzòwa, mbòrcham pánbesanè. Thank you. So now, to our penultimate speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pay attention and listen attentively to the General Secretary of the National Democratic Congress as I invite Honorable Fifi Fiavi Kweke to come and take the podium. Thank you. Eh zou, eh zà, eh zou zou, eh zà zà. Akata, 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 ey, akata masu. Akata, 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 ey. Ey ey, jobodo ey, akata masu, ey ey, jobodo ey, akata masu. Thank you very much. As I saw all of you, and let me begin by acknowledging the high, the high table, starting with His Excellency John Drummond Mahama, former President, flagbearer of the great NDC, and soon coming President of Ghana come January seventh, twenty twenty five. And I want to acknowledge all the seniors who are on the stand, and every single one of you comrades. People of Tamale, comrades of Tamal, it's always a pleasure when I'm here. And genuinely, I feel a home any time I'm in Tamale. It's the second home to me, and I mean that in every, in every way. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You, you belong to a great party. This party is a great, great, great party, and it's always a pleasure to know that right in the heart of this party comes the Northern Region of Ghana, and especially, right here in Tamale.
You should feel proud of being members of the NDC. I mean, a party that produces Jerry John Rollins is a party you should be proud about. A party that produces John Evans Attamills is a party you should be proud about. A party that produces a pride of the North, John Taman in Mahama, is a party you should be proud about. Northern Region, you have produced a person that we can be proud about. Genuine son of the region, genuine son of Ghana. He tells the truth. Now, when he speak, don't you trust him? Yes, you can trust him. He told Ghana that even though Dumsa was not caused by me, I will fix Dumsa. And what did he do? He fixed it. So you can commit your business into his hands because he's a man that can be trusted. You can commit your farms into his hand. He's a man that can be trusted. You can commit Ghana and the resources of Ghana and the destiny of thirty million plus Ghanaians into his hand. Why? He can be trusted. The same cannot be said for the other son that came from your region. That other son that come from the northeastern part of this region of yours cannot be trusted. So you have produced two sons. One can be trusted, the other one, you cannot even give your small business into his hand. Comrades, you owe it to Ghana to ensure that the son who can be trusted rises again to the leadership of this country. You owe it to Ghana to assure that the other son who cannot be trusted should never, never, never come to that level of leadership. Never! A person who tells you, I have locked the dollar and put a bad lock at the eye with the IGP. And then within no time, you saw what happened to the dollar. A man who told you that he was working at what, the Bank of Ghana? And he knew where the money was and he can resolve all the problems of the economy. And when I come, it will be what? Growth and growth and growth, employment and job and job and job. Today, he has run away from the economy and says a digitalization champion. He's a liar! He is a liar! And a liar is a corrupt person. A liar cannot be trusted. You cannot put this nation in the hands of a liar. God forbid! God forbid! I feel sad because somehow he was supposed to have a beginning in our party. And you know, his family has been an NDC family. And somehow, we have always thought that we produce people who tell the truth. Have always thought that, that this party produces people who tell the truth. Even if you have to leave this party to join another party, at least take a little bit of our truth telling into that new party. But no, no! So it looks like sometimes it's just that some people simply do not have the capacity to have honor and to have truth. Today, when I ask them, why is the economy the way it is? They say, no, no, it's because of Russia, Ukraine. It's because of COVID. They don't have the capacity to say it is because of our mismanagement. Because you are put in charge of the economy, a Vice President who is simply eh, an empty barrel who speaks alone but cannot perform. What a solid team! What a solid team! Not knowing it's not a solid team at all. So they're a bunch of empty barrels, empty barrels, who make all the noise but when it comes to performance, nothing to write home about. Northern Region, we thank you. You are a region some of us have always had a lot of love and respect for. Why? I see in you the courage that I saw in Rollins. I see in you the capacity to tell the truth that I saw in Rollins, which is the foundation of this party. And you have to do everything possible to make sure that that one who does not represent the truth that you represent, the courage that you represent, the truth that you speak, he should never, never, never come close to that seat of the presidency. That will be a disgrace to the seat of government. That will be a disgrace to Ghana, to have such a liar rising to become the President of Ghana. You owe it to us. You owe it to the rest of Ghana. Make sure only your noble son rises there. You have many more sons who in the future will be able to follow him. But that one from northeast, never, never, never! No such liar should ever become the President of Ghana. Thank you very much. That is the General Secretary of our party. You don't need any souvenir to tell you that he is ready, as General Secretary of the party, to spearhead our quest for victory come December 2027. Thank you very much, General Secretary. Thank you very much. Now, to an important aspect of today's gathering. There are identifiable groups who are here. Your representative, Temani Apundifila Katupiya. Dimyasoro, Ian Gellachongoona. Yelo yelo nema nimvor yino, kala wongona. Soyabins Farmers, ipune nimvor yino, kamnachango. GPRCU. GPRCU. Ipune yino, nu, nu chirongozo, tumbanwone. Pi yamuyan, jefila ma, tiyama, kabakana. Desama dilankandimyasoro, no yakalan kalan. Arabic instructors, dimyasoro, ki bayina chongo. Nakwahnema, dimyasoro, ngoyansani sahama, nakwahnema. Gumkwa roma, cotton farmers, amadimyasoro, katinyelma, tiyemeni nangala kalan kalan insantiti. Even if you have a written document kindly submitted to Mr. Salam, the Regional Secretary, give us the highlights. Yeto, kama dengbe aben ma, purnuma, katana nunkayosie. So, eh, gumde nema, kotonema, ibeguma, ngoyansani sahama, ngoyimnachango. Representative from the Cotton Farmers Association. Gumkwa roma, nangbanyinlangoma, dimyasoro, yino kamnachango. One, one rep from the Cotton Farmers Association. If he is not ready now, the tricycle riders rep can come as we sort things out. Cotton! Okay. Ah, manu sasigna. Manzantjenizani, gumkwarbezani, negana kotonizani. Eh, bo, debayi pokayam. Abo agmame, detchana president sané. Even do one of the demand, puguna president. Eh, dole zo, Mr. President, manbo agunyala. Ayen necham, revampu, eh, kotonindastre. Tutu dumanané. Teste, ridjendera tawaza, de, de nyetu tumatun tumbe shao. Tekayetohashel paladina. Mpa yi. Eh, na itana sera. Ka, abo swale. Ada, anzangla partnership, zan tikbené, anivesta. Oyu le, gun ma shona. Desanle dimyakonkonyo, bomso. Tundiane, kosho akar, atun tumama. Nubwahnemi, buha buha chalba debayi ma. So, tepaya, tepaya. That's a rep from the Cotton Farmers Association. Thank you for being brief according to our agreement. Soyabins nema, i karachma, chayako yina, Soyabins Farmers Association. Once you have a written statement, we will submit this to the Secretary, Regional Secretary. Attention will be given to it to give us highlights. Eh, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Abdul Hakim Isa, the Director of Administration, Ghana Soyabins Farmers and Aggregators Association. Fine. We have proposals to be submitted to the NDC and we believe with this proposal it will send the agriculture, the soybeans production in Ghana and agriculture as, as a whole to a higher. First of all, in two thousand and twen- sorry, twenty twenty-one, there was a ban on the export of soybean to, to abroad. And this ban was, eh, the proponents of this ban were just few people who live and operate in Kumasi. They induced the government to place this ban on the export of soybeans. And their plan was to hijack the soybean market and then compete with the exporters. As a result of this ban, most of the exporters of the soybean left the country. A number of them were arrested, a number of them were detained. Immediately after releasing them, they left the country and leave, and left the soybean market very redundant. So we appeal to your Excellency to do as much as possible when you are given the mandate by Ghanaians to repeal this law. Because we believe that with this law, any other person can come and do this kind of unthinkable. We are of the belief that the market of soybean is very high. If something has a bigger market and we have huge lands of uncultivated eh, and we have huge uncultivated lands with army of unemployed people, why don't we devote eh, deploy them to produce more soybeans so that we will be able to satisfy the local consumption and then for exportation? Another thing is that eh, we have a number of eh, governments eh, intervention in agriculture sector and none, all of these eh interventions are good interventions, but none of them succeed. Just because when this intervention comes, they are handed into the, they are handed into the, sorry, they are given into, they are put into the hands of politicians who knew absoluteness to nothing about the activities. So this is the reason why most of eh, eh, government intervention in agribusiness fail to succeed. So we are of the view that this eh, your farmer service eh, eh, your farmer service center program, it should be handed to nucleus farmers. Because the nucleus farmers are the ones who have been operating this kind of model for a long period of time. They will be able to recover the investment government put into the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eh, your concerns are duly taken notice of. And I ask that you submit your written document to the Regional Secretary. His Excellency is taking notice of whatever concerns you are raising and I believe he will attempt to highlight a little bit on them immediately before your document is given full attention. Thank you very much. The Tricycle Riders Association, please, you are holding a written document. We will take it for consideration. So come and give a highlight under one minute. Thank you.
My name is Alaa Sanzakare Yusha, the National Union of Tricycle Operators of Ghana, NUTOK, the General Sec- eh, the Regional Secretary. Your Excellency, our numero, our ones are numerous, but let me highlight it a few. I think our topmost one is the legalization of tricycle business. Because our business is not legalized as it, to, to, to use it as a commercial means of tricycle, to use it as a commercial means of transport, it is always a headache for us. When you look at our Constitution of Ghana, Section 1281 and 2 of LI 2180 is our main headache. So we would have wished that when you, when you elected into power, this law will have amended so that it give us also chance to operate, to operate in the system. You know, tricycle is something that has come to stay in the system to be used as a commercial means of transport. We are always, we are always brutalized by both public and security agencies because of this law. When you go to police station, we are, we, we, we have no rights because it is not accepted to be used as a tricycle business. So we are appealing to you, as you promised earlier, when you come to power, you legalize, you legalize our this operation. We urge you to fulfill your promise in case when you voted into power. I tell, and the reduction of divelly lances eh, is our main problem too. Lances eh, as now, if you are to correct in lances eh, when you go to divelly, it, it costs up to six hundred Ghana. And you know, we the Nodness, we are poor. The money is not in the system. So we wish that we should reduce all those things for us. I tell, these are the topmost things that we want you, when you come to power to do, to do it for us. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, thank you, tricycle operators representative. Now, we are inviting another important eh group, the Islamic Instructors. They are representative, Islamic Instructors. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Teza paabu tir naso, wenzangtafsanwo galé. Anzanti, NDC Patzaha, nangbayinga. Kati to la'amna, nete ti di ma behle filaa. Ka saasitaba kapatafsalu. Kaso kampahe, eto amrosirakam dengbe te susuri. Karanuto monte, nassarashale, dosoro boare, December 7. Eh, twete twete four eh, la twete twete eh, five wongona. Dosoro nubana, orataba, na obalagamala. Nangbayinga madanti patmaza, nangbayinga. Kaso patma, kambazaha, nangbayinga. Lalanyabale ma, tutu ndana, SS John, Draman Mahama. Oyala nevo songo, poubiar silomaza, songo nangbayinga. Abelo patne bi akare, oyala, poubiar silomaza, songo nangbayinga. Dosoko lama, anta boare, no la, nzan gana, karachan katana, oso wongo, kato nassara. Dapar, Arabic is right, that's a nity. Katakambu do dure, kafam, zan, kazangma, zan, eti difila, zan, Arabic is right, that's a nity. Ntana, kuto nyana, fashé afanambi okwablo, konyana ma. Na, oguto, kubana, kanyasudo, shafanambi okwablo, konyana, oyasudo. Ntafa, mi, tesa, mi, kama, na pulé, tenan katu ma. Doso, nenan kataré kati, dilma lana, kobeshi wopuma, twanati zan songo. Na wito, nassarama, Arabic is right, that's a nity. Mboti halichet, bezayo, kam, kavazaha, yasudo, kasur, katinbama, karamai, kaso kamsaha, ni mai, nangbayinga, kana pulé. Ntata zana purusumitre, Ashdemi la, zongo kokos, yama le, yara, zachango, wenu be. Enta, tesa, na purusumitre, Asha Mira, zongo kokos, yamale, yaran, zati, o, wano bi. Invital, zankalachi, omapuni, tesura, adha, tiro, na omtamo, mini, executive mazaha, tore. Kanyang, nassaradanti, enta, you complain, dere, dere, nyati, nyabe, shaw, zanti, afan, pam, amar, na ya. Zoga, you, ban, tibana, mi, nyali, tida, shale. Dosona, wito, nassara, katilamna, you complain, ade, dubra, tune, de nara, de tura, de banan, de pamnet. Ka la, karabia, rafuni, ka fanam, zale, let, be, dashi, lebe, do, do. Patma, tesa, po, tishokam, tuya, shesarka, dilma, balama, na oley, chalpanti. Tamele, yashakam, nangdele, olai, bosse, katin, nang, nang, kataroma, la, nyali, te, kala, alakoli. Eh, neti, karnama, tere, patma, from, zo, muzang, kuchera, gue, kampuni, tere, bohne. Tika, na, tika, na, tere, patma, karpala, be, shaka, be, ne, terti. Te, ba, shanso, balaka, teti, zati, patma, zana, ngbayenga, balema, SS John, Draman Mahamad. Wa salaam alaikum warahmatullahi.
Thank you, Ustaz, thank you, thank you. I will not take permission from Honorable Inusa Fesini and invite a representative from the Butchers Association to come and make their case. Thank you.
Now, Nandi Sogo. Na, o, temtesa, alafi, na, o, malo, swakam, bukata. Eh, zo, teta, malo, na kwan, mza, zani, karakana, tesa, tio. Mpurusum, na, tia, la, tuto, arakambi, inusa Fesini. Mpuru, mone, zati, na kwan, ma, zani. Ka, inkanata, zanti, onen, difila, ma, zanti. Eh, yango, swakami, kana, kwan, ma. Eh, nde, yala, ndi, si. Tenma, tesa, blan, ndi, tzo, na, tete, tu, zan, kanazoo, kanat, liam, puli. Tamele, tia, liam, pulu, ma, tokul, zan, leti, yaza, nzan, nang, liam, ma, puli. De, nyan, nang, kalya, ma, kana, pawa, katen, bama, ma, kate, zahabia, rafuni. Doso, nzan, leti, ma, na, tete, tza, ngwe. Netong, kule, bwe, liam, tu, na, tete, tu, zan, kanazoo, cham, lalanyal, kate, bwe. Ten, na, cham, melere, liam, nyanga, te, kambalo, o. Lo, le, kam, karichia, ne, tichang, tesa, mbona, sara, zan, tiam. Tia, zan, leti, za, netong, kobe, sheltu, nune, nzan, sapo, tiam, kalya, kana, pawa. Dati, liam, ma, laye, to, amosere, de, puli. Tesur, me, na, o, gafara, na, o, gafara, na, o, gafara. Twenty, twenty-four, December, na, o, you, kopuné. Excellency, John Draman Mahamad. Oyala, nla, la, pawa, nyaka, koto, lo, ne, ke, katen, da, koto, lo, ne, ma, chang, akara. Nte, swere, in, lala, katalen, lobni, mani, nte, swere, in. Tamele, swere, in, koka, na, tesur, me, executive band, de, yango. Tama, yato, amosere, leti, na, kwa, durma, puli, de, nyad, zana, la, puli. To, tumo, ma, pump, pump, de, bohna, lagra. Don, bohna, lagra, ma, te, gana, tiri, kani, re. Burkina, mim, male, men, togo, Nigeria, beni, infiana. Amika, la, wala, ma, anu, ne. Akuto, tumtuma, ma, do, me, bokwa, la, la, kiel, wudier, bela, lagra. Kati, yosui, Excellency, nde, yin, nang, na, o, gafara, kasi, swine, tesur, la, na. Nde, yin, nang, kati, kana, pawa, oyani, mvo, kama, titi, kabo, bo, shoye, titi, kate, bazani, la, shana. Eh, swaf, long, ndi, nyende, nsa, poti, ne, kwa, guma, katu, ma, jekena. Do, me, ndi, nyan, nang, katen, bama, nong, jeng, yanga, kati, be, dene. To, bo, sapo, te, pam, especially, abatuwa, abatuwa, to, bo, sapo, pam. Doso, to, puru, pam, Excellency, kati, to, puru, eh, lawyer, Inusa Fesini. Now, Nandi Sogo.
Now, Nandi Sogo. Thank you, thank you very much, Representative of the Butchers Association. We are now inviting Negrat, Negrat Reb, Madame, please come.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Yeah, I think it's okay. Honorable members at the high table. Yeah, Mr. President, reading the fourteen-page documents of the twenty-four hour, I saw a quotation, "The twenty-four-hour economy will be implemented within the context of other national development initiatives, such as education and training, health, etc." I quote, "I am much particularly interested in the education and training as a pre-techari institution association." I would have wished there would have been a clarity on how it will be implemented when it comes to the pre-techari education. However, should you implement, I want you to look at the pre-techari teacher. Remember, education is the backbone of everything. This twenty-four economy will become very, very possible if our foundation is very strong. So try to remember the pre-techari teacher. We are always online, we are always on the media crying that the teachers are suffering. Our work within the workplace, we have nothing like when it comes to something that we call teaching and learning materials. Our curriculum is very beautiful, but when you go into the curriculum, there is nothing that you use to bring out the curriculum to implement how it's supposed to be in order to build that little ones who are going to be our future leaders. Then also, Mr. President, to be, I will also plead on you that when you become the president in the near future, try to make sure that the teacher is being recognized and comfortable at his or her job. Teachers are living their full day in, day out. Teachers go to work not because they want to be there, but they are just there just for their daily break. But to have the psychological comfort in order to concentrate, to give the learners what they are supposed to get, is lacking. Just because the teacher goes to school, even getting the three daily schoolmate is the problem. We feed the student, we even teach in the classroom with the little mega salaries that we have in our pockets. I think we have so many teachers here who are your party faithful and they should be in place to justify what I'm putting across. So, Mr. President, to be, I repeat, remember the Ghanaian teacher, especially the pre-techari teacher, when you come to power. We are suffering and we need you to take us through the suffering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Madame, thank you. To the very last Reb, Dressmakers Association, please come.
Now, Nandi Sogo. Tesa, tsurunwale, tumbal, zolansani, katsurunwale, National Executive Smartani. Katsurunwale, Regional Executive, T1, 2, 3, 4, tsurunwale, sani. Yamale, nta, de, nontenyas, pam, ne, tete, shwalen, tesa, tama, yamoshan, zan, shong. Kame, ule, de, puli, na, o, kaya, ndisi, kana, pawa. Nta, kala, labey, yaroma, kame, ule, shong, tse, kala, labey, yaroma, kati, ne, solushinti, la, labey, yaroma. De, me, ay, kana, tibule, ndisi, nda, tira, trama, afong, taba. Karasong, ne, te, Madame, na, bang, gure, be, tuma, kama, les, de. Karabasa, poter, banbi, man, nukun, banse, ma, karatira. Nta, ndisi, ni, yipawa, tibana, nyala, labey, ma. Arayu, jo, mama, sahma, trada, Manuel Machine, one point five. Pupwa, kati, ten, million, apu, nyare. Trada, la, Indra, Sa, Machine, trada, la, eight hundred, pupwa, kati, three thousand, kaba, hundred, apu, nyare. Doso, tesur, me, patma, etlamna, tesur, me, bela, bana, tibule, nyanya. Tibi, shabam, tchens, kandes, kusla, de, kwa, bi, yane, no, no, sakan, des, kuyu, le. Bam, tchens, kandes, kula, zon, sumde, le, bi, nde, zantwa. Karabato, bwa, nune, tumbanse, karasong, tumbana. Tlaya, su, mia, the Regional Constituency Executive, be, kong, boma, pam. The Association, ma, ya, ya, ma, be, kong, boma, kati, mba, kua, yu, re, taba. Kame, ule, ti, amosere, kaba, zahang, kashabey, zan, shanti. Kati, yina, sapo, te, patma, nta, kari, ti, kate, banye, tiba, mama, tiba, di, afani, shere, zanti, bama, pulu. Tesur, ya, ti, T1, shabe, tio, tidi, shara. Kame, yam, pasi, be, kabo, shong, tika, tibanyet, tela, nte, tati, bisha, tumpas, rama. Le, eh, Haruna, be, ti, te, pa, hona, be, su, yene, be, be, zon, po, be, kato, boma, tuta, shong, tlaya, ma. Kati, yosui, bank, ba, pah, pah, ma, be, kong, boma. Nte, pa, pa, me, ne, kandisma, be, kong, boma, be, yane, no, shere, nta, shong, ya, ma. Nta, kati, yina, ni, ya, shong, patma, kari, ti, ti, no, kusur, bwa, ne, shere, ma, now, Nandi Sogo.
Thank you, thank you, Representative from Dressmakers Association. I am sure my elder brother, Alaji Hoodu Yahaya, will now forgive me because apart from being a member of the Blacksmith Association, he is a professional tailor. And a rep from that angle has also come. So I'm sure we have partly satisfied him. Thank you, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the tail end of the program. And as we have indicated, His Excellency is not only embarking on a campaign talk, he is listening to the concerns of various groupings wherever he goes. And I'm sure this platform has given an opportunity for every sector of the economy, players of every sector of the economy, to come and air their concerns. We have asked that all the written documents they have codified, they submit them to our Regional Secretary for onward submission to the Party's General Secretary. And I believe due consideration will be given to all your concerns. Even if you are, you did not get the opportunity to come here, please, you can still submit your document to the Regional Secretary. The Party is ready to listen to your concerns and give it the necessary attention. Thank you very much. Now, to the very last, and with a standing ovation, may I ask your permission and with a rapturous applause to welcome... Oh, thank you. Sorry, we are breaking protocol a little. Before His Excellency will come, our special guest, Alaji Hoodu Yahaya, the founding General Secretary of the Party, has an observation to make. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. It's, Your Excellency, with your kind permission, it's not an observation. Ah, mwa, ne, yale. Teno, ne, eto, achel, mwa, denenyet, man, shesan, chan, twenty twenty-four, ma, nimwa, eto, akata, nona, ma. Do, nirba, dashi, ettiya. Ka, misum, karami, pokwa, ma, kabo, eh, bo, puru, kariki. Eh, pa, poli, tis, pa, campaign, me, katen, nona, yelma, lakati, yarma. Ne, bo, ne, yal, shama, yala, kama, tesa, ndiset, mpi, shozan, zale. No, nyaa, te, flag bearer, mwa. Pan, no, kona, da. Oyala, tese, no, ekana, namba, one, de, yane, non, very important, apart from accountability. Iyeye, ben, dir, gu, yeto, abendir, gu, yeto, abendir, gu, yeto. Kaso, kamsa, adibe, yala, nga. Do, na, o, tete, tumbana, kati, to, koma. Omin, yar, mwa, obi, yar, la, smesine, bor, bshao, te, roti, kale, la. Mom, ma, wa, shi, wa, nyala, pokwa, ra. O, pu, debi, o, 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 ngan, nyaa, Busunu. A, chan, tine, tumban, shale, o, ngab, ne, ma, tu, no, ko, a, chan, halka, watan, te, watan, te, lu. Kanav, chan, paget, matalga. Oyala, nantebana, ko, bi, ne, ma, ne, dak, kwa, wanku, kana, o, o, gur, ne, chan, tibye, pu, ma, ne. Kabu, kwa, ra. Mal, de, didyo, kanyaka, moma, mo, shu, traktas, zho, unkoro, puli, no, no, kuli, yar, mwa. I mean, I'm saying that, what, NDC, we are talking about, we are talking about real and serious business. Right now, people's businesses have collapsed. We are farmers here, in the north, when you kill agriculture, you have killed the economy. President Mahamad, who is our elected flag bearer, says that when he comes, apart from accountability, which will be number one, number two will be agriculture for Ghanaians to be well-fed, for us to produce our own food. And he's not just talking theoretically, but he's talking from practice. And I'm saying that he himself is a farmer. I know where his farm is. His uncles, his uncles are the chiefs of Busunu. When he wanted land, they told him, "Just go and take as much as you can." He has a very large farm. And anytime he comes here, before he goes to Accra, he will drive to his farm. And I have a video on which, in which he himself is on his tractor, on his tractor, farming and plowing his own farm. So he's not like some of these our politicians who are talking just to your sake. At this, in this industrial area, his father's rice factory is here, Mansilo. They were farming. Anytime we went on holidays, they were sleeping on the farm, farming twenty-four hours, even in the night, on the tractors. He, his senior brother, Mr. Peter, Mr. Alfred, he himself, Michael, and all his brothers, all on the farms, on the machines, farming. So when he's talking, he's talking from practice, he's not talking from theory, and we should trust him. This is what I want to add, that twenty twenty-four is a very serious business. When he talks of building Ghana, he means it. All this, we're talking about, the Butchers, the Blacksmiths, the Tailers. He just called me and reminded me that I should get ready to go back to my profession, tailoring. He's going to supply me machines. So please, this, let's make this, let's make this serious distinction between us and the others. It is not theory, it is practice. I just wanted to add this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. In our midst also is Dr. Joseph Kobinamam Buaroxen, parliamentary candidate for Bimbela constituency. We also have Honorable Jacob Idrisungu Benkang, Member of Parliament for the Savulugu constituency. We are equally supported here heavily by the Sanarugu constituency Chairman, Chairman Commander, Tamalino, Chairman Alhaji Alhassan Nay, and then Tamal Central Chairman, Chairman Fki, Popular Nuna Chairman Fki. We appreciate your effort in making this gathering a success. May I now have the singular honor and I will ask you give him a standing ovation. His Excellency, the former president, John Dramani Mahamad. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Indeed, I'd like to acknowledge all the distinguished personalities here, especially the members of our Council of Elders led by our honorable Chief Castlinah and all the other, and all the other executives who have joined us. I also want to thank the professional groups who have come to speak here today. Indeed, I've enjoyed every bit of the program, and that is because I am myself a Tamalay boy. So all the things that you talk about, I am familiar with them. All those of you who know me, you know, I grew up in Tamalay. I spent the longest years of my youthful life attending school in Tamalay. After class six, to come and continue. So, grew up in Tamalay, and so, any of you, you will notice that the longest part of my childhood had shirts in those days. But he also used to wear school uniforms. And so when the tailors and dressmakers, I told them to get ready because he's going to dressmakers here to bring them the machines they are asking for. In the nineteen seventies, when Kenela Champo was the head of state, he visited Tamalay and he taught the region. And he named the northern region, the Granary of Ghana. For those of you who know what a granary is...
For those of you know what a granary is, a granary is a part of the house where food is stored. And he said the northern region was the granary of Ghana. It was Ghana. Because in those days, we were growing up. Millet, guinea corn, sorghum, rice, maize, soya bean, groundnuts, just name any crop, it was produced here. And we had the best. And so, for instance, we had the Betsabu oil mill, which used to produce groundnut oil. It used to buy all the groundnuts anybody could produce and produce groundnut oil. My own father owned the rice processing mill. And he processed all the rice that was available. It is for sale, not for the market, but he was exporting rice to Burkina Faso. From here, we're going to go to the... I used to go to the industrial areas as a young boy. We used to bring our tractors there to repair. And people like Mapila were our friends in the industrial area. They used to repair our tractors. Anytime the farming season was on, industrial area was so busy because they were repairing plows and harrows and tractors and all that. We can recapture that promise of agriculture in the north. And like Hoodu said, if I do it, I'm doing it for myself because I'm a farmer myself. And like he said, I've activated my father's farm in Yape, and also my uncles have given me land in Busunu. And so when the soya bean farmer was talking, I knew exactly what you were talking about. Because this year, my farm produced thousand bags of soya bean. And so when I talk about agriculture, I'm talking about myself. We just came from the Upper East Region. And when I was president, we started a big irrigation project there. Today, if you go there, you'll find those who would have been migrating to the south, they are there growing carrots, they are growing onions, they are growing cabbages and other vegetables for local consumption. Aside from that, they are doing aquaculture in the water, catching fish and smoking it for the southern markets and also for the northern markets. And so if we do agriculture, we'd be able to revitalize the incomes for our people. And so I've taken notes of what all of you said. And our lady here, Beatrice Annan, has recorded everything you've said on her laptop. But I'll comment, there she is. But I'll comment on just a few of the issues that were raised. And one of those that touched my heart is the revitalization of the cotton industry. My father's factory was next to the Ghana Cotton Company. And the cotton industry provided employment for our people. And aside from that, all our farmers, whether they were maize farmers, guinea corn, sorghum farmers, when they plant their crop, after it has grown to a certain level, they put cotton in between. So when they harvest the crop, then the cotton is also growing. And after they've harvested, they harvest the cotton and come and sell to cotton industry and collect cash. So it was like a means of getting direct cash for themselves. When Professor Atamils was president, we came and launched, we called it the white gold, that has relaunched the cotton industry. In one season, we increased cotton production in Ghana from three thousand tons to ten thousand tons. We can do it. We can produce more than hundred thousand tons of cotton in the north here alone. Our lands are more fertile than you find in Burkina Faso. And yet, cotton is Burkina Faso's major export. That is what brings them the most foreign currency. I visited Benin recently. Cotton is their leading export. And our land size is bigger than Benin. And yet, if you go and see what the president there, Talon, has done with the cotton industry and the transformation it is creating in Benin, you'll be shocked. And so we need something like cotton to bring cash into the north in order to alleviate our poverty. And so I can assure you, I announced it already, I'm happy you raised it here, cotton is going to be one of the crops that we promote because it doesn't affect the food supply. Cotton doesn't like too much water. So we normally plant it at the tail end of the farming season, after we have harvested our other crops. And so we're going to give support to cotton farmers to produce cotton so that the generous, we have three generous, one in Tamalay, one in Bulga, and one in Tumung. We have three cotton generous. And so all the five northern regions will be encouraged to grow cotton to feed these cotton generous so that we can export it and bring the cash back into this region in order to alleviate our people from poverty. Soya bean farmers, I suffer the same thing you are suffering. Government has placed a ban on export of soya bean. And their thinking is that if they place a ban on soya bean, it will push the price, it will drive the price down so that it's affordable for the feed millets to be able to buy. But what you don't realize is that if the price goes below our cost of inputs and our cost of production, then the farmer cannot expand his farm. And apart from that, if he is not, if he's making a loss, he cannot farm the next season. I got a thousand bags of soya bean, a little more than a thousand bags. And the price it was being bought for was four hundred and eighty CDs a bag. Really, if you look at the diesel I use in the tractor, the salaries I paid my farm hands, the inputs, the weedicide and all that I bought, then it means that we're not really breaking even. But if we're allowed to export and the price went up, it will make us put more land under soya bean cultivation. It will make us expand the acreage under soya bean so that we can produce more. And when we produce more, the price will come down naturally. And so I agree with you that that export ban is hurting the farmers because the price at which they are buying the soya bean from us, does not encourage us to expand soya, a production of soya bean. So I'm thinking of putting my land under another crop next year. I've started a pilot onion production. I did twenty acres. And I'm getting about sixty bags of onion per acre. And each bag of onion costs thousand, I can sell for thousand four hundred CDs. And so I'm probably better off farming onion than leaving soya bean. And that's why I'm saying, let it find its natural price. Not by burning the soya bean, but allowing exports. You can even restrict the export, say that, look, we'll export two hundred thousand tons of soya bean or hundred thousand tons of soya bean. But to say you banned it completely, it does not create a good price for the farmer and encouraging to farm more soya bean. I have more land on which I can expand soya bean production. But at the price of four hundred CDs a bag, I don't, and the cost of inputs, where the price of diesel for a tractor is, it doesn't encourage me to plant soya bean again. So I agree with you. And if NDC wins, we will sit with you and we'll regulate the bean industry so that you can get a better price and produce more soya bean for the market. The farmer service centers, the farmer service centers are going to be controlled by the corporatives. And so we're going to place them in every district. We're starting with fifty districts. And each farmer service center will have fifteen tractors, agricultural tractors. They will have plows, they will have harrows, they will have planters for all the different crops. So if you're a maize farmer, they will have maize planters. If you're a soya bean farmer, they will have soya bean planters. Some of us were forced to use maize planters because we couldn't get soya bean planters. And the maize planters plant the crops wider than you should. And so we need to bring soya bean planters, which will plant closer so that the canopy will cover the weeds and the weeds cannot come up. And so these are all things that the farmer service centers will have. They are not going to be controlled by government. It's going to be private sector. And so the corporatives are going to work with the private sector because those who are going to control the farmer service centers know how to service and maintain agricultural machinery. In the past, we have given tractors to farmers. A farmer is a farmer, he's not a mechanic. And so sometimes I see farmers, they give their tractor operators some money to go and service the tractor. Instead of sending it to the right place and services, they go and drain the oil and then they buy the dirty oil that the trucks and cars have drained and then they put it in the tractor. As I said, the tractor does not need fresh clean oil. And so in two years, the tractor is broken down. And so the farmer service centers will be run by professionals who know how to keep the machines running. There are many people who have tractors, they don't know that there are grease nipples where you must use a grease gun and grease the tractor from time to time. And so before you see a bearing is broken. And so the farmer service centers will be the private sector working with corporatives. And they'll provide you with a service, if you like, on credit. At the end of the farming season, when you harvest your crop, you pay the credit that they give you so that the next season they can provide that service for you again. Um, Tricycle Association, I've said it already, I said when we come, you and Okada, we're going to legalize you so that we can regulate the industry. And then our butchers, they talked about credits to be able to buy the cows, the cattle. A lot of the cattle is coming from Burkina Faso and outside our country. And the cows are being sold for safer. And so because of the deterioration in the value of our CD against the foreign currency, you need more CDs to buy a cow now than it was in the past. And that is why our butchers are struggling. Aside from giving you credits to be able to buy the cattle, if you are organizing associations, and I've said that, in future, all the loans and credits we give, we're not going to give to individual butchers or individual farmers or individual dressmakers. You must organize yourself into a cooperative. And we will give the loan to your cooperative. And the cooperative can lend it to your members. And they will be responsible for collecting it and paying back the loan. If you pay back the loan, then we will give you another so that you can give to other members. Anytime we give you, if you're able to collect it successfully and pay back, we'll give you some more and even increase the amount of the loan. And so we want to give credits to corporatives and associations instead of to individuals. But more importantly, we must increase the production of livestock and beef and cattle. And we can do it. So when I went to Upper East Region, one of the things I announced was that we're going to revamp the Wulugu livestock station. Indeed, we've got a group that is prepared to invest to reopen the Wulugu livestock station and grow the cattle there. And so our butchers will be able to go to Wulugu and buy their cows and bring them to Tamalay for slaughter so that you can get the cows at a cheaper rate than the ones that come from Burkina Faso. Tamalay also needs a modern abattoir. I'm not talking of a slaughterhouse. We have a modern abattoir in Accra, we have one in Kumasi, we need one in Tamalay. What we call an abattoir, I went there, the one in Yangpala, even water was not flowing. How can you have an abattoir without, it's actually a slaughterhouse, it's not an abattoir, without water. And so we need a modern abattoir that has water that is able to process the meat in a very hygienic manner so that we all can get healthy meat to consume. Pre-Teshari teachers, she talked about conditions of service. I've said it, that the economy is in a big mess. And so I cannot promise everybody that we're going to increase your salaries and all that. I don't want to be like those who, those dishonest people who came and promised you heaven and said they will build factories in every district, they will build dams in every village, they will give every constituency one million dollars a year. I'm not that kind of person. And so I cannot promise you that I'm coming to increase your salaries. But we've taken note of the difficulties that pre-Teshari teachers are going through. And I've suggested some of the solutions. And one is that we will help you with accommodation in the schools so that more teachers can stay in school. One of the reasons a lot of teachers do not want to go on posting to setting areas is because they cannot find accommodation. There have been some rural areas where nobody rents a house or a room. And so you have to stay in town and commute to school every day. And the cost of transport will eat up all your salary. So we've spoken with all your colleagues, all the regions we've gone, we've had teachers, you know, talking about the challenges. But when we come into office, we'll open the books. We'll open the economy for everybody to see what is there. You can only share what you've created. And so when we all see the books, then we will create and then we can share. You can't share when you've not created. And you know the situation in which this economy is. Now, all those who contributed to the mess are trying to run away as if they were not part of it. People have begun saying, oh, they were not in charge, they were not listening to them and all that. All of them, they inside. Jack Toronto and all his small brothers, all of them are part of the mess that we're going through. None of them can escape responsibility, none of them. Because they've all been a part of this, they all sat in cabinet together, they all took those decisions together. Anytime they were going to borrow from the Eurobond market, they approved it in cabinet. They sat in cabinet and approved it. In six years, you went and borrowed thirteen point five billion dollars and you did nothing with it. So today, you can't come and tell us you were not part of it. All of them are part of the mess in which we find ourselves. And Ghanaians are going to send them packing for the hardship that they've inflicted on us, for the debt that they swallowed us in. And they must go home and go and learn their lesson. NDC is coming back, winning this election. And we have the men and women that are going to restore this country's economic, economy and finances back to a healthy condition. And let me put this thing to rest once and for all. They always talk about the mess John Mahama left us, the economic mess he left us. I mean, let's just go down a comparison lane. When I left office, the debt to GDP was fifty-seven percent. Today, the debt to GDP is more than hundred percent. It means if you take all Ghana's GDP and you turn it into money, you use it to pay all our debts and you still owe three percent. Our debt to GDP was fifty-seven percent. And the optimum GDP for middle income countries that is recommended by the IMF is sixty percent. So we're even under the recommended debt to GDP. When we left office, the budget deficit was six point six percent. Today, the budget deficit, it even went to fifteen percent, it has now started dropping. When we left office, inflation was fifteen point five percent. Inflation under this government went to fifty-four percent and is only now dropping, it's about thirty percent. When we left office, cocoa production was 960,000 metric tonnes. And we went for syndication loan of 1.8 billion dollars, brought 1.8 billion dollars into this country. Today, cocoa production is under 500,000 tonnes. And when they went for syndication, they got only 800 million dollars at 8%. We got 1.8 billion at 2%. And so, what are you talking about? You can't compare the economy under us. When we left office, we gave you two new oil fields. All the work that we did as NDC was with one oil field, the Jubilee Field. We worked and brought the Ten Field and the Sankofa Field into production. And so, it made oil revenues triple. When we left office, we had solved Dumsor, we bought enough generation, we established Esla to pay the legacy debt. Today, Dumsor is back, you can't pay the independent producers. And all of you know Dumsor is back, just that they don't want to announce a timetable. Yesterday, when I came to Tamale, the lights were off the whole day. And so, this thing they keep saying, Mahama left a mess, we came and repaired your mess. Before I left office, the IMF said that Ghana's economy was going to grow by 8%. And it grew by 8% and more in 2017. And in 2018, it dropped. When their own policies started kicking in, you look at the GDP growth rate, from the high of 8% that they inherited from me, the next year it went to 6. something, 5. something, until when Covid hit, it went to zero. So, that may about, you left us a mess, you left us a mess. When you came into office, the Kofa Eurobond was left with 270 million to pay. Where did you get that money to pay? Mahama left it in the sinking fund because I knew that debt was coming up. That was visionary because I knew that if a new government came. I knew that if a new government came, it was going to be difficult to find 270 million at once to pay off the Kofa Eurobond. So, we left it in the sinking fund. They came and met it. In October, they just took it and paid the Eurobond. And after that, they didn't put any money in the sinking fund again. That's why when Covid hit, we had no money to defend ourselves. I set up the Stabilisation Fund. When Covid hit, they didn't know where to find money. We told them, go and look in the Stabilisation Fund, I left money in there. Went and took 300 million, you know, from the Stabilisation Fund. I set up the Ghana Investment Infrastructure Fund, the Ghana Infrastructure Investment Fund. And I put 270 million dollars seed money in that fund. Today, that's what you are using to build your Agenda 111 hospitals. So, how can I have left you a mess? You know, they are good at propaganda. And so, they just keep repeating something, oh, we came and met your mess, we came and met your mess. In 2016, for the first time in Ghana's history, we ran the government budget without taking one CD from the Bank of Ghana, zero borrowing from Central Bank. You in 2021, 42 billion, you made Central Bank print for you. The following year, 2022, 35 billion, you made Central Bank print for you. And that is why today, Central Bank is broke because it made a loss of more than 60 billion CDs. When I was president, Central Bank made a profit of more than a billion CDs. And so, that propaganda must stop once and for all. You didn't inherit a mess, you inherited an economy that was doing well. It is you by your mismanagement, your clueless finance minister and your clueless head of economic management team who now wants to run away from economic issues to become the champion of digitalisation. It is they who have created this mess. And you cannot run away from what you've done. Today, they tell us the economy is turning the corner. It is not turning any corner. The IMF has come to say that Ghana's debt is still unsustainable and it's in a distressed situation. The good thing our people have, our friends in the MPP, is they know how to talk, they are very glib talkers. They are good at showing propaganda. And they believe that at any time, they can talk and convince the people of Ghana. But we are the wiser now. All the things they did, the promises they made, they have not kept one of them. How many people's districts have a factory? After the one district, one factory promise. How many districts here have a factory? Even the ones that have, there's nothing there. Those in Waliwali District, there's a factory there, watermelon, there's no equipment in the, in the factory. Is the building going to process the watermelon? You need machines to process the watermelon. At least in my district, Bollet District, we'd have no factory there, there's no intention of building any factory. One village, one dam, they came and dug some small ponds, even when cows drink the water, the water finishes. And so, they can't deceive us this time. They can't deceive us this time. Ghanaians are the wiser. Yet, it's a castle, I come there, it won't work again. I worked in Bank of Ghana, I know the money is there. Today, where is that money? And so, all those who have spoken, I want to thank you, we've recorded everything you've said. And I can assure you that when we come, NDC has the men and women, we're going to resuscitate this economy, we're going to get the economy back on its feet so that we can have peace and progress in our country. We want to change the narrative so that we'll no longer say, Saman Noli, Saman Noli, Saman Noli. We want to make sure that Ghanaians prosper and are able to feed themselves and live a life of decency and prosperity. I thank you all very much, thank you.